Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of Grand Prairie Council meeting for this Monday, March 21st, 2011. I will be filling in for Mayor Bill Given tonight. I will now call this meeting to order. If I could have everyone join us or rise and join us in singing of our National Anthem, please.
Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all thy sons command. With glowing marks we see thee rise, the true north strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Thank you to David Bray for that rendition of "Oh, Canada," and to the National Film Board of Canada for the images of our great country. Moving into the agenda items tonight, let's see here, we'll ask for a motion to adopt the minutes. And, let's see here, Councilor Gustafson.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Monroe. I'll move the minutes of the council, the city council meeting held March 7th, 2011, be adopted.
Okay. Any errors or omissions in the minutes? Seeing none, I will ask council to vote. And that vote is successful and carried. Adoption of agenda, I'll ask for a motion to adopt the agenda. Councilor Rice, please.
I move adoption of the agenda as presented.
And that is carried.
Oh, he's two for two. Oh.[191.62][191.62](Laughter).
I guess I'd never asked for additions to the agenda. It's okay. Okay. At this point, we'll go into our delegation process. This is a time where any member of our community can come forward and speak to council on any city-related matter. We have one person that has indicated that they would like to come up, and so at this time, I would like to call Mr. Jeff Johnson from Aquitara regarding bylaw C-1139I, the utility bylaw amendment. And one second here, Jeff.
Thank you.
Welcome, Jeff.
I just wanted to make myself available to answer any potential questions that council may have on the upcoming bylaw amendment. I don't have a presentation per se, but I'm happy to answer questions.
Excellent, thank you. I've got, I see, Councilor Gustafson.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Monroe. Jeff, was there a number of complaints about this cans being left out too long in the day? Or how did we, are we doing such a great job with the whole program that this is all we could find flaws?
Well, I mean, from an Aquitara perspective, we don't receive a lot of calls, a lot of complaints about cans being left out. I know that we work closely with Transportation Services of the city on, you know, especially with the heavy snowfall that we experienced this year, and I know that we want to facilitate an efficient snow clearing and in the spring, of course, three-sweeping. I know that some of we've had some challenges that way. I mean, I'm sure there are complaints, but we don't receive a lot coming into our facilities.
Is there anything in place now about, like realistically, a person could take their bin and move it three feet onto their own property? Or they could pull up the house or take it in the backyard or give it to the neighbor, whatever they want. Is there, what, where are we at on that aspect of things?
For, you mean for service, for being collected?
Like, where do you have to put it when you take it off the, can you put it?
Well, I think as long as it's on your own property, you can, I mean, there's not much you can do about that. I mean, I think there's an aesthetics point that if it's sitting at the end of your driveway even on your property, aesthetically, it's not as pleasing as, you know, as if you would put it in your backyard along the side of your house or something like that. But I don't think there's anything that exists right now that says that you couldn't have it on your own property.
Thank you, Jeff. Okay. I see Councilor Crokin.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor Monroe. Jeff, I just have a quick comment about sometimes people need a little bit more advertising and notice. Like, I know I got a notice in my water bill about something, can't remember what it was. I just looked at the bill. But I think maybe just to tweak people maybe another month or two. And one of the things I'd suggest, I've seen some on Patterson Drive where I live, and you would think, if you, if you kind of talk to your neighbor, if you're not going to be home till midnight till after your shift, just to pull on, like Councilor Gustafson said, just to pull it up on the lawn, you know, off the sidewalk and the roads. I mean, I think it's just some conversation and a little more knowledge about the bylaw.
Right. Just, just your first point there, you know, we've been doing extensive advertising and public education since May. Is there a specific area that you'd like to see go, like reinforced with the education or the advertising?
No, Deputy Mayor, I just was thinking that, that's always positive to advertise positive. Instead of putting in the paper, you're going to get fined. Maybe just a little more encouragement to the bylaw.
Yeah, well, in that respect, again, from an operations, Aquitara operations perspective, we, other than working closely with the city, we don't have a vested interest in the finding, you know, it doesn't affect our operations of the carts being left on the street. Like, that said, we want to, we want to work with the city as best we can to get them off, right? And we're, we, again, we've done joint advertising, and we're in the process of doing print materials so that we can work with both transportation, our operations, and I had a conversation with Corvickman from enforcement as well about presenting those to them so that we can all work as a, as a team on, and trying to get, again, get the carts off the streets.
Thank you.
My preference would be, sorry, my preference would be to work on an education perspective as opposed to trying, as a hitting of enforcement.
Yep. Thank you, Jeff, thanks.
Thanks, Councilor Crokin. Councilor Rice, you have some questions?
Where did this bylaw come from? Did Aquitara bring it forward, or did the city think it up?
Well, I mean, from, again, from Aquitara's perspective, really, the bylaw's coming so that the cart is allocated as the collection container. That's really the most important thing for Aquitara, as opposed to where we were with bags before. So that's why we, we brought it. The fine or penalty initially was implemented because of experiences had in the town of Stexmouth and, and other areas with, again, getting the carts off, off the street. In that time, I think we, two or three times we went to Environment Committee, we separated, originally it came with the recycling, we separated it to proceed with the recycling, and now I've, I've since had conversations with enforcement, and under the way it was initially presented, there was challenges with enforcing that. So we removed it and really pursued it on an Aquitara basis about, about getting the cart allocated.
I guess, I, I, this is really using a sledgehammer to kill a mosquito, as far as I'm concerned, particularly clause 602 and 604. And I guess, for the life of me, I can't figure out what difference it makes when you put it out. You know, a year ago, you used to put your garbage out in those crow things, would, you know, scatter the garbage all over. That doesn't happen anymore with the container. It's a nice neat thing, it sits there, it doesn't bother anybody. It seems to me that what we have to do is an education. You know, you don't leave your garbage can out all week and just walk to your curb and put the garbage in, because if someone steals it, you have to pay to replace it. You wouldn't leave your bicycle laying on the front sidewalk. But other than that, I, for the life of me, can't see what the problem is leaving them out there. I mean, they're not big ugly things, you know, blotting up the landscape. And people, you know, I, I had numerous calls today with people concerned, and, and so I won't use any of their experiences, I'll use mine. It's not uncommon for me to fly out on Thursday. And I'm putting my, my can out there before I get on that airplane, I'll tell you that. And when, if I don't get home till Friday and the plane doesn't get back here till 10:30, 11 o'clock, my container isn't going in by nine. So, you know, I, I can't see that that's, like, we have garbage police now? I mean, it seems to me we have other stuff for them to do. I, I'm just, I'm just urging, in fact, when it comes forward, I'm going to urge that we send this back to Public Works to take a look at it. Like, there is nothing that will get citizens riled up more than snow, than dogs and cats and garbage, and boy, this was one of them. And I, I just think there are a few clauses in here that went a little overboard.
Can, can you refresh my, what's 602?
That's the placing it out, you can't buy seven and not before 6:00 PM of the day, immediately proceeding, and shall be picked up and put back and wherever you put it by nine o'clock on collection day. But, you know, I, to me, I think we missed an important step, which is a real educational thing that says, you know, if someone backs over yours, because it's sitting there, or if someone steals it, we're going to charge you about a, what is it, like $350 or something like that? Like, it's, it's a big ticket item, so you don't leave it laying around. That, to me, would make more sense than threats. And tell Baron he owes you for sending you here.
No, it's okay. I came here, he doesn't know I'm here. You know, again, from Aquitara's perspective, the 7:00 AM is, is important.
Yes.
Because that's, that's the only way we can guarantee you, you'll get collection services.
I don't have a problem with that.
You know, and the six o'clock and nine o'clock are, are, again, to help facilitate other, other services the city provides. We, we really need to at least have the bylaw allocating the carts and work, we work over the times and, you know, and that, through education, whatever we need to do. But it's fairly critical for Aquitara to have this, that part of the bylaw passed. You know, but I don't, I don't disagree with your comments. It's my, sorry, it was my also understanding, when we went to the Environment Committee last week, and of course, I, I wasn't available for that meeting, that there was no penalties in amending bylaw going at that time. So that, that wasn't presented, at least from Aquitara's perspective, it wasn't presented. And, and again, I wasn't privy to all the conversation that occurred at that meeting, but I think there's some, some information came out of that, so.
And so, would it be, would it be at some point, and when we deal with delegation business, to refer the matter of education back to Aquitara? Maybe you could put something in your water bill, I think it's probably booked for several months, but that, that tells that part, that, you know, the reason that you want to remove it off the curb, the reason you want to, you know, get it is because if someone steals it or it's damaged, you're going to pay for it. So, that's, I think that would make, you know, a lot of people, like I said, they were, you know, I mean, people, you know, and the garbage man threw my container, and what if he breaks it and I have to pay? So, I mean, you know, this, the way it came out was pretty, pretty Gestapoism.
I wasn't at the meeting. I wasn't, again, I wasn't present at the meeting, and I, I.
Oh, that would be the media's fault.
No.[864.56][864.56](Laughter). I questioned the accuracy of the, of the article, but that's, that's generally there at this point.
Okay.
Just for clarification, how much are the carts? Councilor Rice indicated $350, $40. I thought they were about $60.
Yeah, and I don't, it's around that number, if, to replace the card. To be honest, I don't have that number on the top of my head.
Thanks. I see Councilor O'Toole.
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor Monroe. I was at that meeting, and I think the conclusion was that there would be no fines assessed.
Okay.
Unless, of course, it was a continuous thing, and we already have legislation in place now for that, for, I'm not sure the proper term, but there is a fine for leaving stuff out on the street. As for the actual Transportation Minister, or Transportation Director, had some input on there because of garbage pickup, snow removal, and that's why they wanted the carts out. And between going from seven o'clock till nine o'clock, wouldn't have made much difference anyhow. So, just the clarifications there. I don't know if Frank has got anything else that he wants to add to that. So.
Thanks, Councilor O'Toole. And once again, I see Councilor Rice.
That doesn't make any sense, Councilor O'Toole. If there's no fine, what are we going to have? Gary run out there and say, "Don't be bad again next week, because I don't want to be coming back here." I mean, no fine, what, that's, that's dumb, in my opinion.
Is it time for questions to delegations?
Yeah. Okay. Thanks. Just reminded here that this is time for questions to the delegations, not to fellow councillors. I see no one else in the queue here. Jeff, thank you very much for coming today, I appreciate your time.
Sure.
And have a great evening.
I'll be available for the wondering discussion in case there are any questions that arise.
Thanks, we appreciate that. Okay. Are there any other delegations present that would like to, that would wish to address city council at this time? Seeing none, we'll go on to our next order of business, and that would be public hearings, and we have no public hearing scheduled for this evening. Nor do we have any unfinished business for council's attention at this time. No reports either. So into committee business, 9.1, Special General Government Services Committee. I'll ask Councilor Rice to present the minutes of the Special General Government Services Committee meeting, please. Councilor Rice?
I move, oops, yeah, okay, I move that council receive the minutes of the Special General Government Services Committee meeting held March 7th, 2011.
Thanks, Councilor Rice. Is there any errors or omissions in the minutes? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. And that is carried. Councilor Rice, if you want to take us further?
One motion arising from that minute, I move that council approve "resourceful naturally" as the city's new slogan and direct administration to further develop graphic imagery.
Thanks very much, Councilor Rice. Is there any questions or discussion on the motion? Seeing Councilor McLean?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Monroe. Couple of questions I have, "resourceful naturally," I'm not going to try to wordsmith this, this law is done before I get in, but it's kind of seems a little backward. Question I have to, I believe, Councilor Rice or to David, is about the imagery. Have we thought about that down the road, if there's five or six images, how about to select it? Has anyone thought from grade one to 12, where there's six different images and they'll circle one in our youth picket? Has there been anything, discussions on that?
Not, not so far. There's not been any discussion. It will come back to council. Council will receive it probably at a committee meeting, will then become public, and everyone will have the opportunity to give their input at that time. It'll also be placed on the website where people can certainly respond in that fashion. So it'll have lots of exposure, and, you know, I suspect if you put five or six images out there, you're going to probably end up with five or six choices. And this process has gone on for a fairly lengthy period of time, and I think it's one of those times when council steps up to the plate and, and makes a recommendation.
Thanks, Councilor Rice. If I could just skip over to David, I think you're in the queue here as well, too. You had a response that you wanted to add?
Yes, Deputy Mayor Monroe. In your General Government Services package for Wednesday's meeting, you will find that we have put forward a proposed image that would support this particular slogan.
Thank you. Councilor Wong?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Monroe. I'm going to move that we refer this slogan back to the appropriate standing committee for more work. And if I could just speak to that? I expressed some concern over "resourceful naturally" at the General Government Services meeting, but of course, I'm not a voting member on that committee, so this is my only chance to really get, get a chance to ask council to reconsider it. I just want to point out a few things. The Daily Herald Tribune put out a poll shortly after that was announced. "resourceful naturally" only received an 8% approval rating, which is extremely low. You don't expect these to be really high, because you can't create these by committee, but 8% is extremely low. They, they actually had one of the questions there, whatever happened to "Think Big, Go Grand," and there was more people who approved that one than "resourceful naturally." The other thing I'd like to point out is, there's an engineering firm, Stuart Ware, which is an international firm, but they do have an office in Grand Prairie, and their slogan is "naturally resourceful," which is very similar to ours and, or the one that we're proposing. And I think that it doesn't, it, it's not a good idea to almost copy someone else's slogan. The final thing I'd like to point out is that, you know, our, our brand essence is opportunities through innovation. And I believe that innovation and resourceful are a very similar term, so, so it's, it's nice to see that link there. But we've really lost the, the strongest part of the brand essence, which I think is opportunities. I had someone talk to me last week about what they really liked about Grand Prairie, and they said it was the opportunities that were created through the community. Now, that doesn't speak at all to our slogan. "resourceful naturally" to me reflects more of an industrial-type city. It could be Fort McMurray, no offense to them, it could be High Level, it could be the county of Grand Prairie, which all reflect that particular slogan better than the city of Grand Prairie. The thing that really bothers me is that it doesn't reflect the ability or our city's culture, the, the sense of arts, the, the educational aspect, or night, or the business aspect in Grand Prairie, other than something that reflect, that is reflected in industry. So I believe that, I know we need to move on, but I believe it needs more work, and I think that at this point, I would rather us not have a slogan than to choose the wrong slogan.
Thanks, Councilor Wong. I'll call on Councilor McLean again, please.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Monroe. I think I'm going to go with Councilor Wong on this one. And I'm hopefully, eventually, if it passes by this wording or a new wording, that the imagery looks at maybe youth picking it, so I'll be voting yes on this.
Do we have a motion on the floor?
I believe that Councilor Wong did make a second motion here, and maybe if I could have our director repeat that back, please.
Motion on the floor is moved by Councilor Wong. Council refer the motion concerning the new slogan back to the General Government Services Committee for further review.
Thank you, Jeanette. Is there any further discussion or concerns about that motion? Councilor Gustafson?
Well, I was all in favor of this until Dan pointed out that we're copying somebody else that's already got this, these same two words in their slogan right in the city of Grand Prairie. Therefore, I'll be supporting Dan's motion. That's all.
Thanks, Councilor Gustafson. Councilor Crokin?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I wasn't aware of, it was a, a reverse of a branding that was already out there. But I was a great supporter of Grand Prairie, the greatest place to be, and I don't know where that went. But we've, we've spent a lot of time on, on committees, we spent a lot of time wordsmithing. We've got to get on with it and make a motion, but I will vote for the, to the referral back to committee, but enough is enough. Thanks.
Thanks, Councilor Crokin. Councilor O'Toole?
Yes, I'm going to, thank you, Deputy Mayor Monroe. I'd like to support Councilor Dan Wong's decision into forwarding it to another meeting. I agree, I received an email from him earlier today, looked at the, the industrial company that uses that slogan, and it's too close for comfort, as far as I'm concerned, and I think we need to change that. So I'm in support of. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Councilor O'Toole. Seeing no further discussion, I'll call for the vote. And that motion is carried.
I have no further items from the General Government Services Committee. I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions for Councilor Rice? Seeing none, we'll move on to 9.2, our Public Works Committee. I will ask Councilor Wong to present the minutes of the Public Works Committee meeting.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Monroe. I move that council receive the minutes of the Public Works Committee meeting held March 8th, 2011.
Does anyone see any errors or omissions in the minutes? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. And that is carried. Councilor Wong, is there anything else you'd like to highlight from the minutes?
Sure. I'll highlight two things that were discussed at the meeting. First one was committee direct administration to review the building permit fees and development levies for the city in comparison to our regional neighbors and other similar-sized communities. It turns out that our development permit fees and our building permit fees are actually the lowest in the province by quite a bit, but we wanted to see how those stacked up in relation to the other charges that developers would face. So administration's going to come back with a report so we can see how everything stacks up, and before we decide whether or not we're going to raise the fees to meet the average or, or to meet our neighbors in the county. The other thing that we moved was the reservoir feasibility study, or we received a report for information, and what, what's going to happen there is administration is looking at hiring or getting a consulting firm to look at what it's going to cost for us to re-appellitate the reservoir, so whether it requires dredging or something else to, to make that a healthier environment. It seems to be filling up with silt, and it's overgrowing on itself, and there's a terrible odor that comes out of there in the fall and in the spring. So that is, that's definitely something that should be a fairly high priority for us to take care of before it gets beyond that point that it can't be repaired at a reasonable cost.
See a question or comment from Councilor Crokin?
Thanks, Deputy Mayor Monroe. Councilor Wong, is there anything, and I know it wasn't discussed at that meeting, but is there anything in there that we could tweak our budget at that time? I know we're talking about dredging and whatever, but our potholes are in horrible shape, and we're going to need our budget tweaked to add more money for our, our potholes. I mean, it is the first day of spring, or yesterday was, or whenever it was, but they're, they need immediate attention. I don't know if there is enough money in the budget for that yet. Maybe it's not appropriate time to ask it.
Right. Well, this is just the study to tell us what we would need to do, and then a report will come back with recommendations, and that would probably be forwarded to our budget discussions in the fall.
Oh.
Okay. So we wouldn't be spending any money upfront on it.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Kind of answered both questions.
Okay. Thanks, Councilor Crokin. Is, is there any further questions for Councilor Wong? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on down the agenda to 9.3, Special Community Development Committee. Councilor Gustafson, could you present the minutes of the Special Community Development Committee meeting, please?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Monroe. I'll move the council receive the minutes of the Special Community Development Committee meeting held March 14th, 2011.
Thank you very much. There any errors or omissions in the minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. And that is carried. Care to carry on Counselor Gustafson?
Thank you Deputy Mayor Monroe. I have one motion came out of, out of this council meeting, or the committee meeting, and I'll reef, I'll move the council award RFP zero six four three six one one for the Dave Bar Community Center renovations and repairs in the amount of one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars excluding GST to work on Garrett Partnership as the highest evaluated proponent.
Thank you Counselor Gustafson. Are there any questions or discussion on the motion? Counselor Crokin.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Will the, will the Dave Bar Community Center still be operational for the kids and the offices that are there during this? Do you know?
I believe the answer is yes.
I'm seeing a nod from our Director of Community Services, so it looks like it is, yes. Counselor Rice.
And I, either to Counselor Gustafson or the Director of Community Services, this isn't a large amount of money for, for a retrofit or renovations. What are we doing exactly?
This is just for the design, to put in new air makeup units mostly, and I believe new boards. There's one other component, wasn't there, one other big one?
Director of Community Services?
Yes, thank you Deputy Mayor. We'll also be looking at some improvements to the parking area just outside of the condenser area, as well improvements to the condenser, or replacement of the condenser.
So, what are we doing? Like, are we doing all those stuff, or are we just designing it?
We, we approved the, I forget the exact figure in the last budget.
Okay, so this is just step one?
This is the design phase.
Thank you.
And that's all I, all I have to report for Community Development Meeting, if there's any questions.
I still have a few more here.
Oh, okay, alright.
Counselor McLean.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Monroe. To Counselor Gustafson or Director of Community Services, I believe it's one point five million or one point nine million, the whole project, and this initial stage is given and going, you know, how, where the ducks are gonna go and all this stuff. But, is it gonna be finished this year, this summer, this, this project that is gonna start, and is it by the fall gonna be done? That's what I'm wondering.
Director of Community Services, if you could just confirm the price tag on that and the timeline, please.
Thank you very much Deputy Mayor Monroe. The price tag was one point five million dollars. That was the amount that was approved by council. It certainly is our hope and our intention that the facility will be up and running by September or early October, which is traditionally the time that the Dave Bar is ready for ice.
Just one more question is, because I know some of this is elevations outside of the building, and maybe some sidewalks involved in this, so hopefully it's done in the summer and we're not hoarding it or whatever. That's why I'm bringing this to attention.
Okay, I see no other people in the queue here, so we'll ask for the vote on the motion. Seem to be missing someone. Okay, there we go. And that is carried. Counselor Gustafson, is there any other highlights from the minutes that you'd like to present to us at this time?
Sure, briefly, I'll just report on the two thousand and forty-four Winter Games. A report came forward from administration to, and we received those minutes for, for information, therefore, meaning that we will not be hosting Winter Games in two thousand and fourteen. Very big discussion around the table at that time, a lot of, a lot of pros and cons about having them that time of year, and we went through our standing list, and, and that's all I have to report, if there's any questions.
Seeing none, we'll move on to our next item agenda, nine point four, the Environment Committee, and I'll ask Counselor Wong to present the minutes of the Environment Committee meeting.
Yes, thank you Deputy Mayor Monroe. I move that council receive the minutes of the Environment Committee meeting, held March fourteenth, two thousand and eleven.
Does anyone see any errors or omissions in the minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. And that is carried. Counselor Wong, if you want to continue on with the agenda?
Yes, thank you. I move that council proclaim Saturday, March twenty-six, two thousand and eleven, from eight-thirty PM to nine-thirty PM as Earth Hour in Grand Prairie. And in speaking to that Deputy Mayor, this is, this is an event to raise awareness for climate change. Over a hundred million people across the world participate in Earth Hour. It's, it's participated in by over a hundred twenty-eight countries, and that's the hour when everyone is asked to shut their lights off, to try to reduce carbon emissions. And the idea is not to just shut off your lights and not do anything, but try to get a lot, you know, try to still have some kind of a quality of life during that hour when the lights are off. They've moved that back to eight-thirty. Originally, it was at an earlier time, but eight-thirty starts to impact people. When, when you shut off your lights during the middle of the day, you know, it doesn't really have an impact. At, at night, though, you know, you really have to start thinking about, well, what, what would life be like if we overloaded the grid and our electrical system went down, or what would, what would it be like if climate change became such a big issue that all our utilities were affected? So, that's what we should be thinking about during that one hour, and we're asking the public to participate in Earth Hour.
Counselor Wong, I understand this is our third year, I, I think, participating in this, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct, and this is a proclamation that we would make on an annual basis.
Any questions or concerns for Counselor Wong? If not, I'll call for the votes. And that is carried. Counselor Wong, item nine point four point two?
Yes, I move that council give bylaw C eleven thirty-nine I to amend the city AquaTerra Utility Bylaw, first reading.
There is no debate on the first reading of the bylaw, so I'll ask everyone to vote. And so, we have one opposed.
Okay, and I'll move second reading of bylaw C eleven thirty-nine I to amend the city AquaTerra Utility Bylaw, and in speaking to that, the main, the main things that we're considering in this bylaw are the treatment of the carts by the residents, and also the curbside recycling, which is going to come up later this September. Basically, the bylaw defines a reasonable process that will work with the community and other city services, such as snow removal. What it also does is it clearly defines rules and consequences for noncompliance. I just want to point out maybe a couple highlights out of the bylaw. In section six, I'll start with six point oh two, it, in regards to the carts, it says that all waste to be collected shall be placed at the collection point before seven AM of the collection date, and not before six PM of the day immediately preceding the collection date. And I get, okay, I'll just read them out. I won't bother trying to debate these points. Six point oh four, no material shall be situated within three meters of the collection point other than acceptable and collectible waste. All collect, all waste containers remaining at a collection point after nine PM on collection day shall be promptly removed by the consumer. Six point oh five, no material, including bags with extra stickers and/or blue bags, shall be situated within one meter of a waste container. Section fourteen says owners and occupants of dwelling units shall be responsible for costs charged by AquaTerra to replace a waste container, if such waste container is lost, stolen, or damaged, with the exception of damage caused by a collection contractor or resulting from a manufacturer's defect. Section twenty-seven, all consumers shall prepare acceptable curbside recyclables generated at a dwelling unit as follows. Twenty-seven point oh one, all acceptable curbside recycling recyclables shall be contained within a blue bag, which is securely tied. Twenty-seven point oh two, each blue bag shall weigh no more than thirty kilograms. And finally, I'll highlight section twenty-seven point oh three, there is no limit to the number of blue bags which may be put out for collection.
Thanks Counselor Wong. I see Counselor Rice.
I'm, I'm really conflicted of, on this one. I understand AquaTerra needs this, this bylaw passed to move forward, and I'm, I'm, I'm not happy with this bylaw. Not happy with it at all, you know, and, and the word consequences was mentioned. I haven't found those consequences yet. I, I will vote for the bylaw, only because I, I know it's important as we move forward to having curbside recycling, that AquaTerra needs this bylaw in place in order to prepare, properly prepare for it. I, I will be asking during the, when we deal with the delegation business, that this be referred back to Public Works, or, yeah, I don't know, Environment Committee, I'm just not sure what they were thinking. But perhaps AquaTerra as well, and, and take a look at, at some wording amendments, and have this bylaw coming forward in a couple of months with some amendments, because I, this bylaw right now is, is ninety percent a good bylaw and ten percent silly.
Thanks Counselor Rice. Counselor McLean.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Monroe. Originally, it was seven o'clock, and I made a motion for nine at night, which Robert Carroll for Transportation about snow removal, we all know about in the wintertime, it's not too nice, and we're all new subdivisions where your four feet side yard variances, you, there's not much room in the yard, or in the pavement, so I have no problem at nine o'clock at night. It was pushed later for people working in the oil field and logging to be able to get it, and if you're gonna be gone out of town on a plane, get your neighbor to grab it. I do have a question on the money on the carts. There are eighty bucks, I do believe, from the committee meeting to replace, but you're putting it on city property, and if a car snacks, or some kids have a, a night out and there's twenty missing. All these were put in the process of the contract of the new person doing it, that was the same price or good price as before. I think there could be something there where you could replace in case certain incidents of carts, so that's where I'm more concerned of, where some cart, maybe Jeff can come up. I'm worried about that. Can he come speak to that? Or a third? I'm not opposed.
Is, are the members of council opposed to having Jeff come up and answer that question? Counselor Rice?
Question is about the, the price of the carts, 'cause they're eighty dollars to replace, and I'm just, you know, everybody got them because the contract was lowered, because you don't have two people picking up the garbage, and so I'm just wondering, in the future, we have a few spares?
I, I am, I am opposed, and I'm opposed because Mr. Johnson has already advised us earlier that he wasn't sure of the price. He didn't know that information. Secondly, amending a policy that would allow for replacement in certain instances would be an AquaTerra board decision, not Mr. Johnson, so I just don't see any point in having him come forward.
Very well. Counselor Wong.
Yes, thank you Deputy Mayor Monroe. I am gonna speak in favor of this bylaw. I believe that it, it is reasonable. We have to define certain rules of behavior for people. We have to remember also that these bylaws are gonna be driven by, mainly by complaints from neighbors, so it's very unlikely that someone who accidentally leaves their container out till eleven o'clock is gonna receive a fine that same day, because their neighbors would have to pick up on that and, and give our bylaw department a call right away. For the most part, I've noticed that most members of the community are really good at, at retrieving their bin when they can, and we did push the time back to nine PM, because we, we felt that there are, there are some people in which the seven PM time wouldn't have worked. You know, we, we have people that take on jobs that, or, or they have events that will take them into the late evening, so we did recognize that. But the, the main reason for getting these bins off the street, besides the aesthetics, which I think is, is gonna be a major concern, is the snow removal services. Now, the snow removal crews are already having a hard time scheduling around, because they, you know, they're, they're trying to work some kind of continuous pattern, but they're, they can't really do any snow removal the day before your garbage day or the day of your garbage day. So, if you have the odd, you know, if we start relaxing these rules anymore, it's gonna make it even more difficult for them to, to get the snow off the street, and if they end up in your neighborhood and your bin is out there, it's gonna get damaged, and, you know, it really isn't, it shouldn't be the city's responsibility if, if you left your bin out, and it shouldn't be AquaTerra's responsibility either. We all have to take responsibility for, for the part that, that we're responsible for, and I think this clearly defines it. This, this draws the lines in terms of when it's, when it would be your fault and when it would be the city's fault or, or AquaTerra's fault.
Thanks Counselor Wong. Counselor McLean.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Monroe. Uh, just a question relating to Counselor Rice about she want to refer for times. I don't know if that's gonna be a motion, and if it is, can we ask AquaTerra about the cart prices, and to know officially, I think it's eighty dollars, and is there a budget for, for extras, 'cause people are putting them on the city's streets, and someone could take off with it and you're responsible.
Counselor Rice.
A question perhaps for the Inter Governmental Services Director. Who, who drew up this bylaw? Who actually prepared it, AquaTerra or the city?
Thank you Deputy Mayor Monroe. The request for the bylaw amendments came forward from AquaTerra Utilities, Inc. However, they did work in collaboration with the city staff to develop the bylaw amendments.
So, what they were requesting in terms of amendments came from AquaTerra?
It's my understanding that that's correct.
Okay.
Thanks Counselor Rice and Jeanette. Counselor Crokin.
Thanks Deputy Mayor. I think the, the first by, bylaw should have been, do you want one of these in front of your house? I wasn't asked. And when they do, the kids do collect about twenty-four, thirty of them, each one of you are assigned a serial number. I recorded mine, in case my neighbor gets broken, he takes mine, I can just check the serial number. In who's ever neighborhood. I personally, I really enjoyed watching the crows out front, telling people they should be recycling more, because that's how they rip those bags open, when there's stuff in there that should have been recycled or put into your composter. So, I'll vote for the bylaw.
Thank you Counselor Crokin. Seeing no, no one else in the queue, I will call for the vote. And that carries. Counselor Wong, would you continue on, please?
Yes, I move that we have third reading of bylaw C eleven thirty-nine I.
And just a note that this motion must have a unanimous vote in order to pass, and I'll ask if there's any questions or concerns, or questions or discussion on the motion at this time. Seeing none, I will call for the vote. And that is carried. Counselor Wong.
Finally, I move that council give bylaw C eleven thirty-nine I to amend the city AquaTerra Utilities bylaw, third reading.
There is no debate on the third reading of this bylaw. I will ask for council to vote. And that is carried. Counselor Wong, is there anything else that you would like to highlight from the minutes of the Environment Committee?
Yes, I'll highlight three other topics of discussion. The first one being recycling at our city-operated facilities. We had a complaint by a city resident that there weren't adequate recycling resources at the Crystal Center, so the city staff went through and did an audit on all our city facilities and topped up the, the number of containers there. They actually did that well be, in, in advance of the report, so the report was just for information. We also talked about the Snow Angel program that the city has adopted, and that basically recognizes people in the community who volunteer the city has adopted, and that basically recognizes people in the community who volunteer to help a senior remove snow from their driveway or their sidewalks. And finally, the committee approved participating in the regional waste study and recovery, and Waste Recovery Master Plan. Basically, that's a joint venture between the City of Grand Prairie, Aqua Terra Utilities, the County of Grand Prairie, and the West County Regional Waste Authority. And it's to see how we can more efficiently deal with landfill waste in the region.
Thanks, Counselor Wong. Is there any questions or further discussion for Counselor Wong? Counselor Wong, one item, the Snow Angel program, I understand there was about eighteen nominations at the time of the meeting. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's, to my recollection, yes.
Yeah. So it's a great program.
Yeah, and I think it's just, we put together the awards, so there's very little cost to us, but it's really nice to be able to recognize those volunteers in the community.
Great. Thank you, Counselor Wong. Okay, item 9.5, Protective Services Committee. Counselor O'Toole, could you take this away for us, please?
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor Monroe. I would recommend that council receive the minutes for the Protective Services Committee meeting held on March fifteenth, two thousand and eleven, please.
Any errors or omissions in the minutes? Seeing none, we'll ask for the vote. And that is carried. Item 9.5.1, Counselor O'Toole.
The council approved the movement of the Intergated Traffic Unit, which is the RCMP and the Alberta Sheriff, to the Grand Prairie RCMP detachment. I'll just speak briefly on that. When our bylaw enforcement agency moves out of the RCMP building to the old library location, there will be some room left in the RCMP building. The RCMP and the Alberta Sheriff, which will be doing the highways, will need some room to move into. The existing RCMP building is a secure building. It's got the computer setup, hardwired in, and it would be a possibility, while there will be a profit, or will be a fee charged to these people, and we'll be able to generate some revenue. And if there's any other questions pertaining to this, I've got Director Protective Services, Acting Director Gary Roth over here, so he's willing to ask and answer any questions as well.
Thank you, Counselor O'Toole. Are there any questions or discussions on this motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. And that is successful. Counselor O'Toole, once again, I believe there's some more things for you to cover off?
9.5.2, Recommendation, Council Direct Administration to Provide Feedback to the Alberta Solicitor General and the Public Security regarding the Peace Officer Act and Regulations. Some feedback there. I would like to get the Acting Director, Protective Services Director Gary Roth, to just answer any questions that anybody has there, please.
Okay. Acting Director of Protective Services, sorry, you want him to speak about this or just answer?
If he just wants to answer some questions or speak on it briefly, please, if you would.
Okay, I'm gonna call, Counselor Rice has a specific question here. I'll call her to ask first.
Okay. Is there, I have several questions, actually. This is Council Direct Administration to Provide Feedback. So from that motion, I'm sort of understanding that council isn't going to provide the feedback, that it will be administration. Secondly, how kind of a tight timeframe do we have for providing this input? And thirdly, are there substantive changes, and if there are, keeping in consideration, question number two, would it not be prudent for council to go over those changes before we forward them?
Mr. Roth?
The Alberta Solicitor General's Department had requested input by March thirty-first, and this was brought to Protective Services Committee with a detailed review for providing that input. There were four recommendations, very specific detail that were provided to committee at that time.
I don't believe we have, and the rest of us have.
Sorry, what were they?
Certainly, Deputy Mayor, I'll run through those. The first two recommendations dealt with the weapons that peace officers would be illegally have access to. That would, those recommendations would include training and policies around those issues. The third recommendation is with regard to some technical information and timelines when public can make complaints about, public complaints about a peace officer. And basically, that third recommendation would put a limitation on the length of time. And the fourth recommendation was with regards to some specific wording authorities to enhance a peace officer's ability to assist the RCMP more fully at a check-stop type of operation. So there were very specific, detailed types of comments.
You're not suggesting that the meter person be walking around with a sidearm?
Mr. Chair, or Mr. Deputy Mayor, those weapon recommendations were what the Solicitor General's Department calls Level One Community Peace Officer. So those are the peace officers that meet the highest standards in terms of training, and they're also the ones that are out doing active traffic enforcement. It doesn't count for things such as parking meter enforcement officers, animal control, bylaw enforcement, or photo radar operators.
Thank you.
Counselor McLean, you have a question? Your mic.
Deputy Mayor Monroe, question to Gary is that you'd be within the city boundaries because for bylaw officers of the city, so you'd be within our boundaries when the time does go through the provincial government. And the one thing I notice is, not just for sidearms, it's for lasers. And there's been a lot of topic on that. So I know administration will look. Tasers, laser tasers. So that's been really heated debate in society, and so I look forward to see what administration is gonna come forward. But you'd be within the city boundaries, right?
Go ahead.
Mr. Deputy Mayor, certainly our mandate, the mandate of enforcement services officers is to work for the City of Grand Prairie. There are some authorities and some things that go beyond city boundaries in terms of reciprocal agreements and those types of things. But our primary mandate is to work for the City of Grand Prairie and into, for the residents of this community.
Thank you, Acting Director of Protective Services. Seeing no further discussion on this, I will call for the vote at this time. And that is carried. Item 9.5.3, AUMA Resolution. Counselor O'Toole, once again, please.
Okay, recommend, council recommend, submit a resolution to the two thousand and eleven Alberta Urban Municipalities Association Convention to consider a request to increase school and playground speed zone fines. A little update on that would be, a few years ago, when the Alberta government put in doubling the speed limit during construction zones, we felt that this should have been placed at the same time. And Counselor Kevin McLean brought this up to Protective Services, and we recommend that this be brought up to the AUMA, and the provincial government can be lobbied. We would like to see the speed zones in school zones, speed fines, sorry, in the school zones be doubled.
Thank you very much, Counselor O'Toole. Any questions or discussions for Counselor O'Toole? Counselor Crokin?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. It's actually, it was a question that I raised at the meeting. It's not really for Counselor O'Toole, but maybe for Acting Director, that when you are driving in a school zone, and it's thirty kilometers an hour, and somebody ahead of you just seems to be going twenty-five for whatever reason, you, it is illegal for you to change lanes, and I'm sure some of the public don't know that, to change lanes and then to pass somebody, even though you're under the thirty kilometers an hour, that's still a fine of three hundred and fifty-one dollars as we sit right now. So just as a point of information, I mean, we all know that it's on page twenty-seven of our driver's examination, but sometimes when you do pass somebody, you get a reminder. You get to go to the policeman's ball for a three hundred and fifty-one dollar. So kids in those kid zones, you know, they do run in and out. So just as a comment, is that, was that closely correct?
Mr. Roth?
Yes, Mr. Deputy Mayor, that is correct. There's two offenses, one for passing in a school zone and one for speeding in a school zone.
Thank you.
Counselor Rice?
My question is perhaps not appropriate to the motion, but I'll ask Mr. Duskavich. Those little boards that as you go enter the school zone flash, what, I seem to me to be a really magnificent deterrent to speeding. Do we have plans to purchase more of them?
Director of Public Works?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Monroe. Yes, we do. Counselor Rice?
Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion or questions, I will call for the vote. And that is carried. Okay, so in, there is no correspondence for this evening. It looks like there might be one outstanding item from the delegation business to deal with, and I will call on Counselor Rice to speak to that.
I would move that the issue of bylaw 1139I be referred back to Aqua Terra with a request that they consider developing a public education program on the issue of the items contained in 1139I, and that also that we request they confirm to a Public Works Committee meeting the cost of replacing those containers.
Sorry, Counselor Rice, that was to Public Works or to the Environment Committee?
I have a concern. Environment Committee has on occasion seemed to have taken actions that reflected badly on Aqua Terra, so I prefer it go to the Public Works Committee.
Okay. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Okay, and that is carried, or not carried, pardon me, but one, one no. Okay, there were no notices of, that does it for our... Counselor Crokin, sorry.
Thank you, Acting Deputy Mayor. I will forgive you, but there was, there was not an opportunity for us to question, there was no time for us to question Counselor O'Toole on any other things from Protective Services?
I, my apologies.
No, no problem. I just didn't want him to get away.
Counselor O'Toole was, I think you're right. I forgot to ask if there was any other highlights that you wanted to talk about. And I think Counselor Crokin has a question, if there is.
And this wouldn't be directed at Counselor O'Toole. It might be just deflected across them. I would like to know, because I didn't have the opportunity, go to Edmonton, and four members of council did. And did we, at this time, I just would like some feedback. Did we get any indication from the Solicitor General about our fourteen more officers that we really do need in the City of Grand Prairie? And just, of course, what happened yesterday when this huge bad person was in our area, and it was all of our police officers that were put in harm's way, in my opinion. Was there any talk about a funding process where we would get more funding or more officers, Deputy Mayor?
And your question is directed at?
At Acting Director. Oh, okay, no, I, see, I didn't know. So I'm going there, but it'll go back to you. Sure.
Sorry, actually, I'm gonna push it off to our city manager.
Yeah, sure, that's fine. No, your committee. No.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Monroe. To Counselor Crokin, yes, we did meet with the Solicitor General at our meeting when we went to the legislature, and I know Alden Gustafson, or Counselor Gustafson was going to be speaking about that during roundtable. But in that discussion, there were, we did not talk specifically about fourteen officers, although there was some talk about funding, additional funding for officers, depending on what happens with, there's a, right now, the Solicitor General is reviewing the funding for RCMP with the municipalities. And there's the whole urban rural question that was raised, and so that was being reviewed. And there was an opportunity that he was looking for, whether there would be more funding for municipalities or not. So that was, we didn't talk specifically about fourteen.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and Counselor O'Toole.
Thank you. Counselor Crokin? Okay, so once again, back into the agenda here, we did finish with our delegation business. There was no notices of motion put forward for this meeting, so we will start into our council member reports, and I have Counselor McLean to talk about community futures of Grand Prairie and region.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Monroe. Community Futures, the Youth Connection Program is set to end June thirtieth, two thousand and eleven, from the recent budget. Local Youth Connections Office opened in Town Center Mall on February first, two thousand. Since its humble beginnings, the program has evolved into a comprehensive career development assistant program focusing on unique needs advertised to the region's youth population with an aim to keep ambitious young talent engaged and employed in the region. Youth connects in Grand Prairie in the last eleven years, about eighty-eight thousand youth they've helped in this program, and they see more around eight thousand youth walk-in per year. As well, sixteen hundred and forty-six youth in full or part-time employment because of this, academic upgrade and post-secondary education. The two thousand and eleven Alberta budget cancels the Youth Connection Program. Government departments have indicated youth will be directed to utilize other existing services in the community, including the local labor market information center. No increase in support available for this, a reduced level of service for youth, decreased opportunity for youth to connect to the local labor market in supportive strategic ways. In February, the provincial employment rate for all burns was five point nine percent. For youth unemployed, it's eleven point six percent. It's important that our community clearly understands what is losing when the Youth Connection Office closes. Where will the region's youth find the assistance, direction, and activities they now enjoy? Is it fair to assume that they will be adequately served at a local labor market information center? Is there opportunity for the community futures to work with regional stakeholders to ensure youth, especially at-risk youth, are served? Community futures will be losing because of this between two hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand in yearly contract funding to support the youth. Three full-time jobs will be lost as well. Implications for other community organizations, including municipally funded and supported organization, are no longer able to make client referrals to YC. They may have to pick up the slack, meaning municipal governments. So I just wanted to send this forward for information that this is gonna hurt our community.
Thanks for that update, Counselor McLean. Counselor O'Toole, I understand you've got some reports about the library board.
Yes, I do, Deputy Mayor Monroe. I was at the Grand Prairie Library meeting here just the other day on, and I'd like to just announce that we had a number of things go through, and one of the important that I'd like to share with you is, we had an anonymous donor over the years with the library. He made contributions of significant amount of money on a yearly basis, and sometimes just whenever he felt it. Well, he passed away last year, and in his estate, the Grand Prairie Library received eight hundred thousand dollars or thereabouts. And the planning for that money will be discussed here in the next little while. So I just wanted to share that with you.
Thank you very much, Counselor O'Toole. You also wanted to report on River of Death and Discovery Dinosaur Museum Society.
Yes, I just wanted to let you know that on last Thursday, there was a celebration of Stage One of the bridge going across to the bone bed, and I'll just read a little bit here. They're celebrating the completion of the phase on the seventeenth of March. This phase funded a cost of one point nine three million dollars, and it was completed ahead of schedule. funded a cost of $1.93 million, and it was completed ahead of schedule. The date was supposed to be March 31st, so we're very good on that. The, also, we have a Dan Aykroyd Dinosaur Fest in July of 20, July 23rd of this year, and Dan Aykroyd, his wife, his daughter Danielle, will be here. I'm sure you heard it on the radio and the newspapers. There's gonna be a pile of celebrities here. Everybody, it seems like there's a list, including Bobby Kennedy and other people of that significant caliber of financial amounts of money, and we're hoping to make a pile of money at that event.
Okay, thank you. And South Peace Regional Archives Society.
Okay. The meeting was held on March 12th, and just to highlight of that, they had their annual general meeting. A couple of things that I want to run past you. Beth Sheehan is a supporter of, of this community. Elizabeth Sheehan is a great supporter of this community, and there's an award that's handed out every year, and Judy and Campbell Ross have worked significantly many hours over the years, and they had won an award named in her honor, and that was given on the 12th of March. Just a couple more highlights what the Archives does for this community and surrounding area. There's approximately 446 processed individual collections. There's 27,801 photographic images. We have 1,278 items in a library, specifically in the Archives, 470 newspapers, 136 films and video recordings, 676 paper artifacts, 441 maps or blueprints, and 386 sound recordings. Some of the work that they do, they answer over 709 specific phone calls for research on archival material, and I can go on and on and on, but I'm just letting you know that the Archives is a very busy center, and if anybody has items that they want to store at the Archives, there's a lot of work to storing them. They're labeled and cataloged and placed in a proper storage facility, and they will be maintained for a long, long time. It's a good thing to store, whether it's a business, a club, or even family stuff.
Thank you very much, Counselor O'Toole. Did I miss any council member reports?
I just want one more to ask if you wouldn't mind.
Of course, go ahead.
The South, Grand Prairie Museum also presented two awards this, at the annual general meeting. Janidell Peterson and Jim Brooks were volunteers for the club, or the library, sorry, the museum. For many, many years, without their work, the museum would be in disarray to a great magnitude, and I just wanted to pass off their names as being great volunteers, and they won the Miss Isabel Candle Heritage Preservation Award for 2011.
Excellent. Thanks once again, Counselor O'Toole, and I'll maybe just have you continue on with our roundtable discussions.
Okay, let me get started here. On March 17th, I mentioned the Pipestone Creek Dinosaur Initiative. Roy Bickle had a bridge named in his honor. It's the bridge, what's that?
The Bickle Bridge.
The Bickle Bridge, yes, it is. It was honored, we were honored by the presence of Colonel Retired the Honorable Donald S. Ethel and his wife Linda Ethel. They are the Lieutenant Governor for Alberta. They come up to Wembley Pipestone Creek area and on the 17th, and dedicated the bridge in his honor, and we had a bit of a celebration dinner there that night as well. And just some more stuff here. On the 9th, 10th, and 11th, I attended the off-site retreat. We met with Gordon MacLeod, the mayor of Fairview. We had a strategic planning, and I can't wait till we can implement these thoughts and processes that we come up with in the next year and over the next period of three years. I went, attended the South Peace Regional Archives meeting on the 12th, as well as the museum, like I mentioned earlier, and I also attended the Agra Show. Our council met on the 14th with the Sexmouth Council here at City Hall to discuss some concerns that both municipalities may have. And on the 18th, I attended the breakfast for the boys, and we had a, that was put on by the mayor and a number of other people that I just want to share with. We had a keynote speaker, Michael Kaufman, world-renowned speaker, educator, and writer. His initiative approaching engaging men and boys in promoting gender equality and transforming their lives has taken him around the world. He has worked extensively with the United Nations and with governments, non-governmental organizations, corporations, professional firms, unions, universities, and colleges. He is the co-founder of the White Ribbon Program, the largest effort in the world of men working to end violence against women. And that was a remarkable day, and breakfast, a little early getting out. I think I may have mentioned it should be a brunch next year, but we'll leave it at that. And that's all I've got to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Counselor O'Toole. Counselor, Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Monroe. As well, March 8th, I attended, me and my wife and two children, the Christ Church had a pancake supper. My children loved it a lot more than me. They're raising money for a flood they had in 2005, and I think they put new cabinets in, and they're doing a good job. As well as March 8th, me and my family as well, we're at Laurel Preserves International Women's Day for Unit Number Six Girl Guides of Grand Prairie Town Show, raising money for them to go to Jasper on a trip. As well, same as Counselor O'Toole said, March 9th, 10th, and 11th, all day we were out of town and away from our families and our community doing a strategic council retreat. On March 17th as well, I was at the River of Death Discovery Dinosaur Museum Community Dinner, and the mayor there, Glenn, did a really good job. Lieutenant Governor was there, and the only comment, I gotta say, we gave a million and a half dollars or something, and I would have liked to seen the city of Grand Prairie on there as well. That's all.
Thank you very much, Counselor McLean. I'll call in Counselor Gustafson to give his report.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor Monroe. By far the most entertaining and best part of the last two weeks was my trip to the Alberta Legislature with other members of council. A big, huge thank you to our Minister Mel Knight and our MLA Wayne Drysdale and their team. They treated us like gold. Mel insisted there will be no change through this election, and he also said our books are, he also said our books are the best in the country. Mel also said this government is paying for services today, like the hospital and roads, for us to use for the next 30 years. Lindsay Blackett was bragging up our Montreal Cultural Centre and the fact that we have a strong arts community. We reminded him of our 100th anniversary celebration coming up in 2014, and I reported to him how our committee had to branch off to support the community interest in participating. Mr. Blackett said for our dinosaur park to attract the celebrities that are attending the gala on July 23rd enforces that we are players, and he can't wait to get back up here. Our Health Minister Gene Wasdeski spoke highly of Mel and Wayne, quoted they are solid. He asked about the physical link between the college and the new hospital. He's pushing hard for a closed-in connection. Teaching, training, and practicing is critical to having community connection. Mr. Wasdeski wants us to be involved and give input suggesting we get a hospital building committee put in place. Gene was also insistent on getting a helipad for Starz ambulance to land at the hospital, and with a plan for growth and an education clinic, clinical connection. Minister Cindy Addy asked about our bone bed. She expressed her gratitude for Fort McMurray's ability to host large hockey tournaments, telling myself, yes, we need more ice here in Grand Prairie. The minister also spoke of the tourism industry, stating tourism is marketing Western Canada, and she also mentioned 75% of our tourists come within. Hector Grujro has authorized a review of the MGA, which will be interesting how that comes down the pipe in the next couple of years. Minister Danlock told us that our hospital is the most important job on their books. A unique situation, cancer clinic incorporated in education. They have $520 million allocated for the hospital, and he wants that to go to the hospital and nothing else. He also asked about the future development for the rest of the property. Minister Dave Hancock showed up. He's very well aware of our concerns for a new high school here on Grand Prairie. He's building a 10-year strategy for the capital input to new schools. He looks at areas on a regional basis, and he likes the idea of theaters in schools, and ensures there will be no duplication of services. Mel spoke to the positive communication with school boards and that they listen to their needs, and that our knowledge campus needs to be finished. Dave suggested partnering with developers, cities, and school boards to build a business case for new schools in the province of Alberta. All in all, it was a great, inspiring trip, packed day with meetings at the ledge. As we were reflecting of the day's events, it was realized that the majority of the day was spent lobbying on behalf of the region and the community of Grand Prairie. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Gustafson. Counselor Wong, if you could give your update.
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor Monroe. Tuesday, March 8th, I was at the Grand Prairie Regional College's President's Award Luncheon at the GPN. At that meeting, my wife and I were inducted into the President's Council with other members of the community, and that's where I received this fancy pen. On, thank you. On Wednesday, March 9th to the 11th, I was away with council at the strategic planning sessions in Fairview. On March 14th, council met with the council from the town of Sexmouth. We did, we did discuss highlights. We also discussed the potential of contracting their crews for, for help with our snow removal efforts. I thought that was a very good potential partnership. They said they were actually planning to help us out this year, but unfortunately, a couple pieces of their equipment broke down just at the wrong time during our extreme snow event, and, you know, so they weren't able to help this year, but they did say that next year they should, they should be able to at least offer some kind of service to us. I wanted to add, on March 15th, with the meeting with the provincial ministers at the legislature, I thought it was an excellent experience. It was an excellent time to build that positive relationship between us and the provincial leaders. One of the things that we were able to do is we were able to highlight some examples of innovative partnerships within our city, such as the Scores Agreement, and other visionary buildings such as the Community Knowledge Campus, which is only missing one more piece before it's completed. So some of the ministers were very interested in that. They were, they were even talking about making a trip down to Grand Prairie to get a firsthand experience of what these, what these things look like. We took the opportunity to thank the provincial leaders for their investment in our city, especially with the, the new hospital, and we did try to focus our asks only on those priorities that are on our strategic priorities chart. It's a very difficult year for them to invest additional funds into our community, but they have already committed to that $520 million regional hospital. This was the first of four trips of this type to the Alberta Legislature with the rest, or within the rest of our term on council, and I do want to really say thank you to MLA Wayne Drysdale for helping us to organize those meetings, and both to him and Minister Mel Knight for their support during those meetings.
See, last Thursday, March 17th and 18th, I was in Peace River for the Mighty Peace Watershed Alliance. They had their initial general meeting. They had stakeholders from all across northern Alberta. I think there was about 70 people in the room, so it was a really good turnout. They had a presenter who had done one of the watershed reports for the North Saskatchewan, yeah, the North Saskatchewan River, so it was really nice to get an idea of what kind of topics get covered. We also had presentations from Alberta Fisheries and Alberta Environment. One of the things that I thought was really interesting was there was a, there was a company out there called Taddling for the Peace, and they're actually planning a trip across the Peace River. They're gonna build a York boat, the same kind of boats that they sailed back in the 1800s along these rivers in Canada. They're gonna build it out of authentic materials, so out of pine and tamarack wood, and they're gonna sail from Fort Dunvegan all the way to Fort Vermillion, and they expect the trip to take anywhere from 14 days to 18 days. And they're looking to build up a crew, so if anyone is interested, you just have to go up to High Level where they have their business, and you could probably contact them through the internet and sign up, you know, if you had a couple weeks of time to spare. They believe that they're gonna be able to make it without having to stop off and ask for any handouts along the way. So you're gonna pack your own food, you're gonna drink water right out of the river, and you're gonna sail all the way to Fort Vermillion. Just as a final piece of information, I was appointed to, or appointed as Secretary of the New Mighty Peace Watershed Alliance Society. They, they did form an official society, and I'll keep you up to date in terms of what happens at this point forward. On Saturday, March 19th, I cut the ribbon for the grand opening of the Goodwill Store in the Gateway Plaza. Also present were MLA Wayne Drysdale to give greetings, and Counselor Helen Rice, who was able to do a bunch of shopping there while she watched the festivities. On Sunday, March 20th, I participated in the Big Brothers Big Sisters Bowl for Kids fundraiser at the Family Affair Lanes, and I thought that was a really great opportunity for council to do a little bonding, and at the same time raise a bit of money for the organization. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Wong. Counselor Crokin?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Monroe. On March 8th, I did attend the, at the Grand Prairie Motor Inn, the Grand Prairie and Regional College's President's Awards. Congrats to Counselor Wong and all the deserved winners, especially by Sanahera. On March 1911, I was with the rest of council at Fairview at our council strategic goal setting, and we met with the Fairview Council, and I made a proposal to them. They have a very large ore find just north of Heinz Creek, and we do have our neighbors to the south that have coal, so I said if you'd ship your iron ore and we'll get the coal from Cold Lake, from Grand Cache, and we'll have a smelter here. They kinda didn't like that idea. On March 14th, we met with the Sexmouth Town Council, working with our regional partners, Fire, and I'm sure that if we met with them this week, they'd have a lot to say about policing because of this, this huge fellow that was a threat in their neighborhoods. On March 16th, I attended at Five Mile Hall, the Grand Prairie and District Old Timers Association Annual Dinner, of which I do, am a mayor, Helen, or a member. On the 17th, I've drawn a bit of a blank. It was a green blank, mind you. I knew where I was after I went to the 7:00 AM breakfast the next morning with the big boys, where Speaker Michael Kaufman was speaking, and I agree with Counselor O'Toole that maybe should be at noon, especially if it's after St. Patty's Day. Goodness. Then on the, on the 20th, of course, the Bowl for Kids Sakes, and also Counselors O'Toole, Gustafson were there with, along with Helen, I'm sure she'll report on that. She was our captain and did a good job. She was telling us each one which ball you had to take to throw down the lanes, and I was very happy for all that direction she gave to us. So she had three strikes in a row, but I think the last two were, what was it? One was a speeding ticket, and one was something. So anyway, that's, that's all I have to report, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Crokin, and Counselor Rice.
Thank you very much. I too attended the council strategic planning retreat, and I commend the staff who put it together. I think it was put together very efficiently and very effectively, and so I think we, we accomplished a tremendous amount. I attended the local authorities pension plan board meeting. The LAP now has $17.65 billion, and 31% of its members are municipal employees, so your pensions are in good hands. I also attended Alberta Recycling Management Association Board Meeting. That's the Tire Paint and Electronics Recycling, where we increased, there'll be an ascending three-year increase in crumb subsidies. I attended at the ribbon cutting for the Goodwill's new location in the former Visions Building, and they've got it set up very nicely there, and they provide some incredible employment opportunities too, in the community. I attended at the bowling for Big Brothers and Sisters yesterday, where Counselor Gustafson aced us all, showing off his athletic ability and tried to pretend he'd never bowled before. and tried to pretend he'd never bowled before. Councilor Wong was mediocre, and the rest of us were not so good. But we did, we did have a good time. Want to echo Alderman Crokin, although I never thought that would happen. But I do want to echo him and congratulations to those award winners from the Grand Prairie Regional College President's Awards Luncheon. Q ninety-nine's general manager, Ken Truyn, received the Most Distinguished Volunteer Award, and he reminded us that community support is crucial when it comes to institutions, that without it, they wouldn't be able to reach their potential. Also, the Distinguished Alumni Award went to Senator Dennis Patterson. And as, as Councilor Crokin mentioned, the Board of Governors Award of Distinction was taken home by Vi Sana Hera, fearless fighter for this community.
Thank you very much, Councilor Rice. Councilor O'Toole, you said you had something to add?
Yes.
Mike on?
I went to the Grand Prairie South Side Fire Hall on Friday. I got invited to a special ceremony. It was Sparky's sixtieth birthday, so I ended up taking my three, three of my grandchildren down there, and they had fun and got to meet Mr. Sparky himself.
Thank you, Councilor O'Toole. Couple things that I attended that were, were not mentioned. I took in my first meeting at the Center for Research and Innovation Steering Committee. I am now on that steering committee and look forward to getting a lot more involved with the Center of Research and Innovation. On March twelfth, I also brought greetings on behalf of Mayor Given and the city to the Spirit Seekers Conference put on by the Friendship Center. I understand that this is about their eleventh conference that they put on. It looked like it was a huge success, lots of, lots of people in attendance, and everyone spoke very highly of the event. I guess the other thing that I would like to mention about our trip to the legislature is that I feel very strongly that we've really set the foundation for a great relationship with the province and look forward to, to future visits with the ministers and MLAs. And then finally, I know I'm probably not supposed to do this, but seeing as I'm deputy mayor, I will do it anyways. Yesterday, my kids participated in a downhill giant slalom race at Rabbit Hill, Edmonton, where my son took fifth place and my daughter took home the silver. And with that being, oh, you gotta taunt me now.
I do, I want to take this opportunity on behalf of council to congratulate Deputy Mayor Monroe. I think he did a tremendous job chairing this evening's meeting and stepping in and working the buttons, so congratulations.
Thank, thank you very much, Councilor Rice. With all that being said, thank you, everyone, for coming out this evening, and this meeting is now adjourned.